I call to order this meeting of the Warren County School Board for Wednesday, February 19th. The first item on the agenda is to accept and modify the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the agendas presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for February 19th, 2020.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Action agenda. Approval of AS Roads copier lease. Mr. Grant.
Oh.
I was looking down here for you. You're not in your regular seat.
I know. So, AS Roads, the current lease for the AS Roads copiers is set to expire soon and after reviewing the available replacement options, it is recommended that the attached copier be replaced with the existing copier. This contract was competitively bid through the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies, which is a national cooperative purchasing program for schools, governments, and nonprofits, and meets all the Virginia public procurement requirements. The copier is a 36-month lease and it is $720 a month for a total cost of $25,920 for three years, or per year it will be $8,640. Does that have any questions? I've included last year's or the previous contracts, so you compare along with the price of catalog and all that, and we're well below all the standard.
It's about $5 more per month than what we were paying last year.
Yeah, and I believe they were able to get, was this the one that had free color copies? There was a couple of them that were able to get unlimited color, and I can't remember if it was this one.
I remember seeing that. Maybe at LFK.
It might be LFK, yeah.
Hilda J., I believe, was even less than the last year.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? Questions for Mr. Grant? No? Is there a motion?
I move that the contract in the amount of $25,920 be awarded to document solutions for the lease of copier at AS Roads Elementary School and that the superintendent be authorized to sign the lease agreement.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of Hilda J. Barber copier lease. Mr. Grant.
Okay, we're under the same deal here. The current lease for the Hilda Barber copier has expired, and we're looking to replace it with the attached DSI copier replacement with the existing copier. And same thing, this was also competitively bid. It's the same type of contract. The pricing is 2,000, no, I'm sorry, $1,295 per month, which is $46,620 a year, or $15,000 a year, $15,540. And these are, this is four copiers. No, I'm sorry, three copiers, and then unlimited service for the toner, drums, developer, staples for all three units.
This is for how many years?
This is three years.
Three years. And our last contract was three years, right?
Yes.
Are we all on the same with the same?
We are not. That's, we're trying to get everybody in the same, so we have one holdout.
And that has been that way for a while, right?
Oh, no, no, that one just, and it was, so we have one holdout, and then it hasn't been, when that comes up, we're going to address that as well, but, and then once we do that, we're going to try to get them all on the same schedule.
Schedule.
And then we'll have better buying power once we have everybody on the same.
When is that contract?
It's probably two years or so.
Okay.
Yeah, it was before you.
It was before me, but when the last year.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And I'm more than glad to have that conversation with Mr. Grant to bring everybody on board.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Grant?
I believe that was slid in under the last principal. I believe that got slid by the last principal.
Not to blame anyone, or there was nothing here.
That would be great, though. Everybody on the same.
Okay. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Grant? Is there a motion?
I move that the contract in the amount of $46,620 be awarded to document solutions for the lease of copier at Hilda Barber Elementary School and that the superintendent be authorized to sign the lease agreement.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of LFK copier lease.
One more. So, the LFK copier is also set to expire soon, and we've reviewed with different companies, but DSI again was the cheapest, and so we're looking to replace the existing copier contract with the current one. This one is 36-month lease payments at $1,199 per month, and that's $43,164 for the three-year contract, or $14,388 for the single, for one year. And this is also three copiers and unlimited copies for toner, labor parts, drums, and developer staples.
And that is a multiple color.
Yes.
Just a general question. Any of these three ones, two of ones?
So, they will all scan fax and print. So, yeah.
So, they do scan?
Yes.
They scan documents on paper and paper?
Yes.
As I work fax. Good.
Do I need them back in here?
I move that contract in the amount of $43,164 be awarded to document solutions for the lease of copier at Leslie Fox Kaiser Elementary School and that the superintendent be authorized to sign the lease agreement.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of 2020-2021 Warren County Public Schools Program of Studies. Mr. Fox.
Good evening. Since we, two weeks ago, we've had a few additions to the program of studies. I'd like to bring to you briefly and explain them. We've added civil engineering and architecture. Students are introduced to important aspects of building and site design and development. They apply math, science, and engineering practices to design both residential and commercial projects. Students progress from completing structured activities to solving open-ended projects and problems. It sounds like a very exciting course to me. We've had a change in definition for engineering, design, and development. The course description, students will build structures and engage in problem-based learning that exposes them to commercial, industrial, residential, public works, and institutional technologies to help them understand the choice of construction careers. They learn proper safety procedures for tools and machinery, vocabulary and terms associated with construction, blueprint reading and symbols associated with architecture, and math concepts and principles used in construction. We also would like to add education for employment one and two. The course description, the course teaches students to make informed career and continuing education choices as they transition from school, as they gain technical skills and adapt to the workplace. Students are taught ethical behaviors and career research, job acquisition, workplace communication, self-awareness, customer service, and life skills. And finally, the last one, which is very exciting, and this comes in on the heels of the ability to offer the Patient Care Tech, is a class called Introduction to Health and Medical Sciences. And this is specifically for grades, it is for grades nine through 12, and it's an introductory course, and we hope to capture some students in ninth grade and get them in that pipeline early. The course introduces the student to a variety of healthcare careers and develops basic skills required in all health and medical sciences. It is designed to help students understand the key elements of the United States healthcare system and to learn basic healthcare terminology, anatomy and physiology for each body system, pathologies, diagnostic and clinical procedures, therapeutic interventions, and the fundamentals of traumatic and medical emergency care. So, again, we apologize for bringing these in so late, but they are some, what we believe are some very good additions to the program of studies. And with that, if you have questions about the program of studies, I would like to take them, and if not, I would ask that you approve the program of studies.
All the ones you spoke of this evening, those CTE classes?
They are CTE courses, and then they take, like, the Intro to Medical Sciences, I believe that's when it takes place at the homeschools, where I'm hoping, for ninth grade, but yes, these are CTE courses.
We have instructors.
We have instructors, yes. Well, with the Patient Care Tech, if we're able to, this is dependent on that physician being fully funded.
I think that last one sounds like a great program. That sounds pretty detailed for life practice.
Very excited when that came across my desk.
You have instructors for all these? Or someone in mind?
We, I know that Jay Baker has someone in mind. We do, we have not hired an instructor yet.
Any other discussion or questions?
They'll do to start down.
We have that a little clarified.
You got nothing to do, walk across us.
We were open to that.
You have to go through a lot to get into president.
Madam Chairman, I would move that we approve the 2020-2021 Warren County Public Schools Program of Studies and be approved as presented.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Recommendation for approval of food service management contract renewal.
Thank you. At the last school board meeting, we discussed renewing Sedexo's contract for our food service management company for the 2020-2021 school year, and the cost increase is going to be 1.5 percent. They could have charged us 3.1 percent, but we have a tough negotiator who is able to keep it at 1.5 percent, so that will, we are glad to report that. The Sedexo will guarantees that we'll have a financial return of $72,750, and they will give a $6,000 annual scholarship, which is broken down into multiple scholarships, I believe, for multiple students. They will donate $6,500 to the Backpack Program. They will give a grant of $2,500 to start new programs or introduce new programs in Warren County, and then a $1,000 contribution to the Warren County Educational Endowment. Sedexo will continue to do healthy, provide healthy food for our students and make sure it's compliant with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, and they will serve fresh fruits and vegetables daily, and they will continue to do all the great things that they're currently doing, so be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Is there a motion?
I'll give this a shot. Sorry. I move to approval be given to the contractor Sedexo as our food management services company for the period of, for the period July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, and the interim superintendent authorized to sign the Sedexo food service management agreement and accept any administrative non-material charges as required by the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a second?
I'll second, and just clarify maybe for me and that kind of thing, we have to submit this to the VDOE, Department of Education, and sometimes they can take a while to get it back to us because they're not entirely familiar, I think, sometimes with outsourcing, but their changes are almost never anything significant. I'll do that, I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Warren County Government Public Safety Building chiller repairs. Mr. Goodwin say.
Thank you. To begin, some of you may be aware or may not that we, the School Division, do provide support, operational maintenance support, to the Warren County Government. That support really consists of just HVAC maintenance and repair for all of their sites, so the public safety building, approximately seven years old, I guess, seven, eight years old, has a custom-designed, custom-built chiller as part of their HVAC, and it has a cracked heat exchanger. This is a very complicated piece of equipment, something that only factory-trained technicians can work on. The heat exchanger has been needed to be replaced. We have had difficulty finding qualified contractors to even give us a quote on this. In this last research that we did, I did discover too, that this company, the low bidder, Hoffman Mechanical Solutions, is also supporting the Rappahannock Regional Jail. I had no idea they had the same system design that the public safety building has. They were the low bid at, the numbers indicated, the $20,000, $238.90. These costs are reimbursed to the School Division. We invoice quarterly to the county for reimbursement for any support we provide to them, so with your approval tonight to award the contract to Hoffman Mechanical.
So, they're going to be replacing it?
Yeah, has no choice. There is, he takes a chance on a repair. Two-thirds of the cost of this is the labor to do the replacement. It is not the component. This is how complicated this machine is. It has to be towed, disassembled, to get to the heat exchanger. So, the whole machine has to be torn down, so, you know, two-thirds of the cost are labor.
I'll take the two.
It's going to take three to three and a half days.
So, they're going to be without heat?
Well, right now, the machine has what we call multiple circuits to provide the cooling with, and this is, heat exchanger feeds one of the two circuits, and we've been limping along. Thank goodness it's not the middle of the summer, so they've been able to maintain temperatures up there, so.
And the county government is aware of the cost there?
Oh, yes. Thank you, yes. Since we don't really have established thresholds for county approval with their work, I did run this through because this is a significant amount of money, so they're aware of this cost and that this repair needs to be made, so that's something Melody and I have discussed a little bit, you know, somewhere down the road. We do need to put some protocols in place for them to make the process a little smoother, so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the grant of the Warren County Government Public Safety Building Chiller Repairs to Hoffman Mechanical Solutions of Greensboro, North Carolina, in the amount of $20,238.90. Chairman of the School Board be authorized to sign the contract.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Work session. Update on E. Wilson Morrison's school improvement plan. Mr. Goodwin.
Hi. Thank you for the invitation, and I want to say thank you to everyone in this room for what you do for our school and all of our schools in the county, so thank you all very much for the invitation and for the 60 minutes. I always provided for this update, so.
That was six.
Okay, it was 10, so now it's down to six. As you all know, the school has been accredited with, due to a waiver in years past, and in this current year, there's accredited with conditions, so the reasons for that were our grade five science scores and achievement gaps in English and math for students with disabilities, and also English for our African-American students. So, I wanted to structure our conversation today kind of in three pieces, some evidence of where we are, sort of why I think we are in that place, and also just at the end, kind of some work we're going to do ahead. I think you have the document hopefully for review, so I'll just walk down that. Our AmesWeb Plus data is trending higher this year than last year for English and math, and that AmesWeb data is based on grade three through five performance in reading and also math, as I suggested. Our grade three through five second advisory benchmark data has improved significantly from last year, so that's wonderful. I'm really excited about these numbers to share with you. Grade three through five data is higher than last year in both content areas, math and English. So, for grade three, their English performance was up on this second benchmark, 19 points, and in math, 18 points from where they were last year. English is up in fourth grade, 30 points, and also 30 points in math, so significant improvement. And also, grade five English is up nine points, not as many, but the score to begin with there was higher. And then grade five in math, that performance is up 24 points, so I think that points to some real student growth due to the work of the teachers in our classroom and the division helping us point in the right direction with our content areas and our coaches at our school. Grade five student growth assessment, this is an assessment we give to kind of see what students know at a particular time. The grade five students at this point in time, and this assessment is based on fourth-grade standards, fifth-grade students take a science SOL at the end of the year that's based on what they've learned in grades four and five. So, that data is higher than last year, with 68 percent of the students meeting the benchmark, with the state benchmark being 70. And I do want to remind you that that was given a little bit early, so all of the instruction hasn't actually been completed, so that number is already high. And we basically do that so we can, has a predictive value, so that we can build a 45-day plan as we walk into the SOL. So, students are kind of delivered specific instruction for them based on what they do and don't know from a skill perspective, so we have to give it a little early. So, that score is actually pretty good considering there's some content that hadn't yet been covered. Our African-American group of students, their benchmark data indicates that they're right on track to meet the benchmark in English and math. Those students, grade three through five African-American student group for English, they were performing at the 78 percent pass rate, where the state benchmark is 75, so already above. Grade three through five African-American students for math, 79 percent with a benchmark of 70. And then our students with disabilities, or another group of students we're working hard with, they're actually more students with disabilities scoring higher on that benchmark this year than last year in both reading and in math, so that's significant. Did you have any questions about that portion? You can ask me anytime, but just wanted to, okay? So, you might have a question, which I think we all do, is probably, why is this happening? What can you attribute this good work to? So, I would suggest that improvement has occurred in all of those areas, thanks to the commitment of excellence, and to excellence our staff has with the children we serve. Also, we've been able to retain a higher number of teachers this past year than we have in years past. Two years ago, 50 percent of the teachers at E. Wilson Morrison were new. Last year, we only replaced fewer than 20 percent of the teachers, so I think that pointed in the right direction. The more experience a teacher has, obviously, the more ready they are for excellent instruction in the classroom. It's also due to a whole-school focus on rewarding positive behavior, constant examination of our performance of our groups that we're watching, active student response training, an intense focus on lesson planning with rigor in mind. And our coaches at our school, we have a math coach and a reading coach. I kind of call them both everything coaches because they really touch every content area, but they're assigned to reading and math. They work with our teachers in the areas of math workshop, which is an instructional approach, and vocabulary instruction. That's one of the pieces we really need to work on with our children. And then finally, as we work ahead for what's going to happen at the end of our year, we have a 45-day plan that all students will participate in, leading up to the SOL testing for every student. That adds an additional 30-minute period for targeted English and math instruction. We did have a 45-day kickoff yesterday with grades three, four, and five in our school, and the students were just absolutely excited because of the production that Ms. Cameron, our dean of students, had put together with several people. And we ended that by having a contest to have third, fourth, and fifth grade students try to convince me by saying as loud as they could, "I can do anything." And to hear the power in their voices, it was so convincing, and then we met the kids at the door and gave high fives, and they all said, "I can do anything," because it really is a belief in self that gets you to that place that you want to be. So, today, kids were still coming in the door this morning, off the bus, "Mr. Goodwin, I can do anything." So, I think that's a message for all of our students. We have structured conversations with teachers, coaches, and administrators around guided math instruction implementation. We have a whole staff session. We really work with the instructional resource team, which I'm very thankful for all of you, on horizontal and vertical lesson planning for content, especially rigor, making sure that the work we're requiring of students in classroom is hard enough to get them to the place our students need to be. We're working on increasing hands-on investigation opportunities in the area of science and acquiring materials for our classrooms. School-wide vocabulary program development, including word of the day, and increased writing opportunities. By the way, word of the day today was subtraction. Lots of students catching me in the halls and outside in the cafeteria trying to spell that for me and tell me what it means, so. We have seven staff members this year completing a teaching struggling readers course through the University of Virginia, and also we have tutoring opportunities that happen inside and outside of school hours for students. I did want to also just mention, since we are really targeting our English or reading instruction, I'm holding individual goal-setting conferences with every student in grades three through five to set targets for what they need to score on the SOL. I think it's important for kids to be involved with setting targets and meeting goals, and at the end of time, just in case you're wondering why, what we're going to do with that, after they take each one of their tests, they're going to ask one of the administrators or our dean, we're going to ask them, did they do their best? And if they can say yes, we'll give them a reward that day just for doing their best, because we do want to make sure we're raising that bar of expectations they have for themselves. We're also hiring a reading tutor, as I mentioned here, who does happen to be a retired teacher that will work with students inside school hours. We have a 30-minute extension, as I mentioned, and then finally, we're receiving additional specialized training from our special education staff, including Carla and also Deena and many others, and Mr. Hersch has been really supportive of that and allowing us to have people. And of course, I'd be remiss without saying that Ms. Rudisil sitting across from me is not only a cheerleader, but also a person who keeps us moving in the right direction. So, I'm very thankful for our staff, very thankful for our kids, especially, and our families, and how everyone works as a community in our School Division to make sure we get there, and you're a big part of that, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinaldi and I had the opportunity last week to visit E. Wilson and have lunch, and some of the students took us around on a tour, and we, I think I can speak for you, we were both very impressed with what we saw.
Thank you.
And we thank you for what you're doing and the commitment you have to our children.
Thank you. Especially the special ed teacher that we met.
Mr. Grant.
And this was really, he's impressive. He got down on his knee when he's talking to these kids instead of looking down at him and talking. Yeah, he was, I could tell he is a remarkable guy.
Thank you.
Fortunate to have a guy like that.
Thanks.
Kids flock to him.
They do. I'll share that with you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Back out.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Goodwin?
It does have to do, you know, we talk about teacher retention.
Yes.
What's there? What's our student?
It's.
Do we have them, like, 90 percent of them move forward from year to year, or do we have a lot of fluctuation in students? Students that were at E. Wilson last year aren't there this year?
Okay. Want me to answer that?
Please.
Okay. For the most part, we have students at our school that stay pretty fixed. We do not have a lot of movement from one school to another. We will sometimes share children with, because of housing, with one school or another nearby. Generally, those kids will, will get a call from the other school, and if, you know, we pass along information, or if there's anything that's needed with the family. One thing about this community, and I think about our system, is that we really do care about kids when they move. We follow to make sure everyone is where they need to be and has what they need, but in terms of how many kids leave or come back, it really is fairly fixed. I'd say 90 percent, at least, and more.
Because I know, we talk about retention.
Yes.
Teachers.
Yes.
Continuity, but continuity of schools sometimes is.
I think it feels like a lot of children, when you have children who are moving from place to place, and particularly those students who have been in numerous places within one school year. So, it just seems daunting from, you know, the child's perspective, but overall, I don't have a number, but I made myself a note to see if I can get one, of what our mobility is, but it isn't as, as big as it sometimes feels.
Thank you for sharing with us. Six minutes.
Might have been seven.
Just got to get you the curtains.
Oh, yes. The blinds there at the front of E. Wilson.
Oh, the library?
Yeah.
I would love to talk with you further about that. Thank you.
We need to address that at some point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not going to meth them, but you're welcome to try.
I think they're beyond repair.
Pull out your sewing machine. We need to address that at some point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not the method, but you're welcome to try.
I think they're beyond.
Pull out your sewing machine. Discussion of block schedule and grading policy. Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you. So there have been some questions about our grading policy and our block scheduling. And what we would like to do at this point is actually form a focus group with folk from our secondary schools, middle and high school, to be part of that group. And a couple of the things that we would like to do is send out a survey and then also, you know, talk with the focus group about what the survey says. But we don't want to move too far into this until a new superintendent is named because we think that that person needs to be part of the conversation as well. So we, you know, we understand that there are some questions and we want to be able to talk about that and work through the process. For our block schedule, we need to make sure that whatever schedule we move to, if we stay with a four-by-four, if we go to an AB or a seven, six or seven period day, that it works with all of our other programs that we have in the school division, like our Blue Ridge Tech Center and Mount Dusse Governor's School and all of that. So we need to make sure that we keep those in mind. And then, for our grading policy, when we implemented the grading policy, there was a committee that included a schoolroom member, principals, teachers, a teacher from each of our locations, and instructional staff here at the school board office. So we will comprise the committee of a group of people much the same and work through those processes. So if you guys have any questions or need additional information, be happy to answer.
We're going to do the survey prior to hiring the new superintendent.
Yes. We'll start the work prior to hiring the new superintendent.
Focus group.
Yes. But we don't want to get too far along the process where that person doesn't feel like they've been part of the conversation and the decision. Alan or Lisa, do you guys have anything to add?
Thank you, Governor. I will myself. I would say that no matter the schedule that we use, the number one factor in student achievement is having a caring, competent teacher in the classroom so we feel comfortable whichever direction we go.
Any discussion? Fiscal year 2021 budget work session. Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you. It seems like we just talked about this last evening. So. And so I have really good news. Our insurance rate came back a few days ago, and it was a decrease of what, Mr. Smith?
5.9%. So that's excellent.
Yeah. So we have an excellent rate decrease. If you guys will remember, two years ago, we had an increase of almost 20%. And then, last year, we had a decrease of?
We had a slight decrease. I think it was less than 3% perhaps. And then, the years previous to that, we either were stable or had a decrease. We just had that one year that it just, perhaps it all made up for.
Well, we had some major claim.
We do. And that's what drives a lot of this. There are certain things that are just, you really can't plan for because you really can't plan for certain things.
So we're going to have some savings from that. And we would like to, the employees' portion of the health insurance, we would like that to decrease the employees' share of the health insurance. So that will go down, you know, almost 6%. But the county is going, or the school system is going to save 6% as well. And we've got a few ideas of what we would like to do with that money. And over, you know, we haven't been able to actually process that and understand how much money that's going to be. I know Mr. Valentine's working on that. We just, you know, like I said, we just received it. But when we know more information, we'll be able to make some recommendations. But some of the thoughts at this point are maybe paying for some of those one-time calls, making our health insurance more competitive with our surrounding areas and, you know, maybe looking at some of those positions that we've requested in the budget. So that, you know, so it is good news that the health insurance rates are going down. But at this time, I guess I would like to ask Rob to talk a little bit about the timeline. We are likely going to need an additional work session and a special meeting in order to meet the, our budget timelines. But our thought is that, I've got a little note here, that we have a work session after our March the 4th meeting. And then, we have a special meeting to approve the budget on the March the 14th. And why we want to do that is because we believe we'll have additional information from our, the state on how much money we're going to get from them. Is that right, Rob?
Maybe March 11th.
March 11th, yeah. What did I say, 14?
Maybe.
March the 11th, yes.
Yeah. Well, as of this past weekend, the House and Senate budget bills have come out, have crossed over to the other body to be considered by that body. So right now, we have three budget bills sitting out there. The governor's that was proposed back in December, and then, the House and Senate bills. And we've got a synopsis of what's included in both the House and Senate bill. But quite honestly, the devil's always in the details, and we haven't got the details yet. DOE has, I believe, 10 days from when they come out this past weekend to get to school divisions, what that'll mean to each individual school division, each of those budgets. I received information that they hope to have it to us a little earlier than that, probably by this weekend. So once we get that, we can really see what it means to us as far as revenue and see how much difference there is between the three, if you want to call them competing, budget bills. The General Assembly is scheduled to adjourn on March the 7th. So if they do that, and if they pass a budget then, which some years they do, other years they aren't able to, we'd be in pretty good condition or shape then to be able to say, okay, here's what we expect to get from the state and move forward. So that's what we're going to do, is wait and see what we get from both of those bills, see what the difference is and what that might mean. Both of the bills, in one form or another, move up a salary-type incentive to fiscal year 21, whereas the governor had not proposed doing anything in the first year of the biennium fiscal 21, but doing a salary increase in year two fiscal 22. So we will see. My only fear is sometimes when they move something up like that, they fund it with money from somewhere else that was already in your budget. I don't know that that's the case, and we won't know until we get those detailed budget sheets, hopefully by the end of this week or certainly by early next week. So we're almost in a state of hold at this point. We've, you know, talked about the priorities we want to do with the salary initiatives and the positions, instructional positions, we feel we need. But till we get a little better picture of the revenue from the state, it's a little bit difficult for us to do anything much more. And then, as Mrs. Shepherd mentioned, we do want to look at, what I'm working on right now is doing what we would call a zero-base budget on the health insurance. We can, I can tell you what the 5.9% would be savings over this year's budget. But what we want to do is compare it to what our actuals are now. And that's basically taking all of our enrollment, distributing it over the different plans, and then applying what the new rates would be. And then, see what that difference is between what we've budgeted and what it would be next year. And it may be more or less than a 5.9%. I'm thinking it might be a little bit more than a 5.9% if we've got a little bit less enrollment in our plans than what we had had the prior year. So we're working on that, and we'll have that. Definitely be able to have some good numbers on all those type of things when you meet on the 4th. And can talk about that in the work session then. And hopefully, with your feedback, can come back then with a budget proposal the following week to adopt and forward to the county as your proposed budget.
So I just asked Mr. Stanley if we could give them our budget on March the 12th, and he said that would be great, so, which will be the day after, after our work session, if we're able to do that, so.
And typically, what we've done, there have been years where the state did not adopt a budget when the General Assembly adjourned. One year, it went actually until June, which we certainly hope that doesn't happen. But even if they don't, we have to make some assumptions then, based on those three budgets, which one we want to use. We'll probably be conservative and use the one with the lesser amount of revenue for us so that we present a budget that's based on that. And then, if something more gets approved, we go back and get an additional appropriation and are able to receive and spend that money.
So I guess is everybody available March the 4th for a work session after the school meeting that night? And then, is everybody available on March the 11th for a special meeting to approve the budget? And I'm open to 5:00 or 7:00 o'clock. It would probably need to be in this room, is my guess.
Yeah, we can do 5:00 or 7:00 or anywhere in between.
Do you have trouble getting here at 5:00?
I don't. I'm down.
I'm good.
And then, if you just want to take a few minutes and look at the things that we have proposed and see if there's a priority or if there's anything that we haven't considered.
This is the same as what we talked about last night.
Yeah. And I think Rob may have some copies of that, because he's going to just sign them down, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Or anything that we haven't listed on the.
You said last night you're waiting for.
And Shelly has been to Claude Moore Valley Health. Yeah. So this would be a halftime position. So if Claude Moore and Valley Health were able to contribute, it would be a halftime position. So we would, you know, in order to start the program, we would need to put, you know, that piece in. Unless we just wanted to start with a halftime. It would be great if we started with a full time because we could add that program that Mr. Fox spoke about earlier this evening, helping.
Introduction to.
Does anybody else need a sheet?
We had a clean copy.
Ms. Baker's been having a lot of conversations with Valley Health, so. And Lord Fairfax Community College, which kind of controls a lot more money. Anything that we've forgotten or that you would like to include or, you know? I would say my priority, my top priority would be the funding of the salaries for teachers, instructional assistants, and nurses. And then, you know, and then we can make a recommendation on the order in which the other things want to come or however you guys want to do it. And I think buses and textbooks were my second, second area. Lisa's not, Ms. Brutusill's nodding, so.
Any questions or any discussion?
How many buses do we have? I was asked that today.
Mr. Mitchell?
I had to guess.
60 coupled. 60 coupled. We have a few that aren't in service, as special needs, that we use as spare.
We're running 60 every day.
No, sir. We have, we have that, I mean, we have six buses that are like trip buses. So they leave early to go out of county or whatever. So those don't run every day. And then, we have spare special needs buses as well.
And some of those trip buses, do we use them as spare buses as needed or when we have a breakdown or a maintenance issue or?
So that's sort of where we get the four a year in the ideal world. If we'd replace four a year, a 15-year life cycle, and that comes out to your 60-ish buses. So if we could ever get on a plan where we have the discipline to do four a year every year, at some point in time, the cycle would catch up with itself. But we've got a lot to catch up with, don't we?
We're getting there.
And if we do at least purchase, that makes us be responsible enough to put that money in our budget from year to year to year because we know that we're going to have a five-year lease. And then, we can just leave that money in there to do an additional five-year lease, so. And then, I think we've replaced seven buses out of the last 10 years. So that's, you know, we're way behind our replacement.
We should have replaced 40 during that period to stay on that cycle, so.
Are we using our buses to transport the wrestling teams down to Salem here in a couple days? I didn't know if we used our buses or if we chartered.
We do. And so like when the, it's one of the things that has a big impact that none of us have any control over is depends on when our districts get moved to a different region or we're in a different section, playing different, where they hold districts or where they hold regionals. And so this last move, when we started going to Salem, and it's, it's a long haul on a school bus.
Long haul for anyone down 81.
Just to ask, Mr. Wood, what's the timeline of custodial services?
Timeline, we're looking, RFP's proposals are due in March 13. So sometime early April.
We just did the pre-bid.
We had the pre-bid conference February 2nd, answering a few inquiries, questions from the vendors, which I hope to have the second final addendum out tomorrow. Of course, they have up till March 2nd with any other questions. And I expect, we've already assembled what I'll call the evaluation committee to review the proposals. And I would say, inside of a week after we receive them, they'll be distributed with instructions for the committee members, so.
We had 22 organizations come to the pre. It was a mandatory pre-bid, so I'm looking forward to getting quite a few.
Break turnout.
Yeah, quite a few.
Yeah. They got their bids already prepared. I got to change the figure here and there. That's about what an amount should be.
Any further questions or comments? Any further business? Meeting adjourned.